We'd like to open the night with any comments from the general public. It's been a pretty quiet night. We have no one from the EAPC tonight and nobody from Student Advisory Council. So we will move right into minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 11th open session minutes.
Second. Motion made in second. Any changes, questions, comments?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Communications.
We had an exciting communication at the end of last week. I was notified that Carver Elementary School has been selected of one of five schools by Learning Design Magazine to receive a citation of excellence for design. I had written a letter of support for the award back in February. The award recognizes the work of our architects, our construction team, and our project managers for their outstanding design of the building. Meredith, I believe there's a link in there. I think there is.
Yeah.
To pull up the magazine article. While that processes, so I just want to recognize the members of the design team. From HMFH Architects, our key designers were Matt LaRue, Wendell Chin, Diana Jeffries, Laura Wernick, and Devin Ken. From CTA, our construction team, Matt Kaye and Brian McCourt. And from our project managers, PMA, Chad Crittenden, Walter Hotley, Chris Carroll, and John Pope. So we were excited by a national magazine to receive this citation. There's going to be more information on this to come. And this is going to be published throughout the country, recognizing the architectural and design of the building. So the project team was really excited to have this recognition. So I wanted to bring it to the committee tonight. And we'll just read a couple of the comments in there. So there's this kind of overview page with Meredith showing now. And then there is also a specific page on Carver, gives a one-page design. And a couple of comments that they put in is "Education is on display throughout the school. Every place in the building is a great place for students. Project spaces are flexible and interesting. Looks like a great place to learn for kids." So obviously, this, we're just excited to have that, have ourselves and have the town and the community recognized and have our team recognized for all the hard work on the building project.
Excellent. Next is you as well.
Yep. So, reports from the superintendent. Several personnel updates. We've had some movement over the past month. A lot of these, we have a couple of different things going on. We have several teachers who are beginning or going out on maternity leaves. Then we also have some movement in our paraprofessional ranks. Some of our paraprofessional positions where we've had some movement, we've replaced those positions with long-term subs, saying that most likely the people are going to be here for the rest of the year and then we're going to look at going into next year, our exact structure and need in terms of paraprofessionals. So on this list you'll see a couple of long-term subs, long-term subs for paraprofessionals. So I'll just go through the list of personnel changes and updates since we last met. So we have Raboub Rashid, a long-term sub teacher special ed at the elementary school. Jessica Fryberg for food services. Taylor Jesse as an on-call mechanic at the bus bar in transportation. We have Kelly Gibbs, a long-term sub paraprofessional at the middle high school. We have Stephanie Muir, a long-term sub paraprofessional at the middle high school. Kara Simmons, long-term sub paraprofessional at the middle high school. And Jessica Joy, a long-term sub paraprofessional at the elementary school. We also had a couple of resignations. Michael Brogan as a brush driver. Deborah Demirlis is a food service operator. Holly Hoffman in food services. And Amy Parkowski as the speech language pathologist at the elementary school. And Linda Bryan as a bus driver. So we actually did, we did have two, we lost two bus drivers this month. So we're working towards replacing those staff in the transportation department. So we actually have had a lot of personnel movement within the past month. Ready to go on to district and school?
Report cards.
Report cards. So, just as a starting point, as a point of clarification, district and school report cards is not in reference to any of the report cards within the school buildings. This is the rating from DESI. So the Department of Education develops what they call a report card for each school district. And recently, DESI has created a new format for the district and school information. So my goal really is just to make the community aware that this information is available on the DESI website about the district. The information that we're going to quickly review tonight is generally information that's been covered over the course of the year in different presentations. So it's not my intention this evening per se to make a large presentation on the DESI district report cards. It's just to show people how to access it, talk about the format a little bit, and show the community the information that's available. And they've just taken a new approach, which I think it kind of gives a global view on a lot of topics. And then when you go into those global areas, you're going to see there's a lot of in-depth information if people want to get into those details. So my goal in this evening of bringing this to the committee and bringing it to the public is to say, hey, this information's out there. Take a look at it. It's a lot of great information about the school district. So Meredith has actually brought us to the website, which is doe.mass.edu. And if you just searched, if you do a search on Massachusetts Department of Education, you're going to get to this site. If you go into the site, you select data and accountability. Then you go to school and district profiles. And then you pick school and district report cards. And then you select Carver, and they'll give you a district-level report card and a school-level report card. And let's go to the district one. Yep. If you can scroll down, Meredith. But this would probably be better if I was using the machine because I'm going to take it through it a little bit. But what I think is good to see here is it just gives, the setup I think is fairly user-friendly. It just gives you some basic questions about the district. Who are our students and teachers? And so if you click on that link, it's going to give you information about student enrollment, student demographics. It's going to give you information about teachers. And it starts obviously with just broad information about the number of students we have in the district, the number of teachers, that are licensed to their level of experience. But if you notice under every tab, there's a little piece that says "View more detailed information." Meredith, I don't know which one you're on there.
I'm on the teacher one.
Yeah. And so if you click on that tab, all of a sudden it's going to give you all this very detailed information about teachers within the district. And whether you want that level of detail or not. And you can actually compare it to other school districts. So Meredith, you don't have to go into any detail on that. But basically, in essence, but the point being that, you know, anywhere you go in this website to the major questions, it's going to give you more detailed data if you want it. And then you can close out that link on who are our students and teachers. And it just goes down to what academic opportunities are available for our students. Meredith, I'm not going to go into each one. I'm just actually going to read the questions. What do students' attendance and discipline look like in your district? How prepared are students for success after high school? How do our students perform on state tests? How much does our district spend per student? How is our district doing in the state's accountability system? So I just think this is a nice approach in terms of it gives you the big picture, big item questions. You can go into each of those questions. And then within those questions is as much detailed data as the Department of Education has available on every school district. So you can start with nice broad strokes, or you can get into the weeds of very specific data. And so I just thought that this was a format that I personally found and looked at and said, I like this format. I think it's a good approach. I think it's a user-friendly approach. So since there's a user-friendly approach out there, I want the community to be aware that they can go here and take a look at any of this information on the school district. So really, that was my intention of this this evening. As I said, a lot of the information here is presentations or discussions we've had at different points during the year. We've made a specific presentation about the accountability system, about MCAS reports, about, we talked a little about student attendance under the accountability system. We've talked a lot about student enrollment during the year and had some specific reports on those things. Obviously, we've talked a lot about finances and what the district does financially. So we've had a lot of the information that's contained here, we've looked at at different points during this school year. So I don't know if there's any questions or thoughts for me.
Seeing none.
Alright. So at this time, I'd like to invite up Angie Townsend and Lauren Tiago, who's going to make a presentation about disability awareness at the middle high school. And also, I'll give a little bit of a background of an intro, and then I'll turn it over to you. So several of the teachers at the middle high school have developed their student learning and their professional practice goals. So each teacher has to have a student learning goal and a professional practice goal. They develop their goals around raising awareness about disabilities for students and staff and parents. So based on these goals, a team of teachers at the elementary school, sorry, the middle high school, a team of teachers at the middle high school have been doing several different types of disability awareness programs throughout the year. And Angela Townsend and Lauren Tiago are here this evening to tell us about what they've been doing. So with that, I'll turn it over to them. And then if there's any questions we go along, we'll hit.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Angie Townsend. I am the speech pathologist at the middle high school.
And I am Lauren Tiago, a special education teacher at the Carver Middle High School.
So we are here to talk about our Diversity Day that we had for sixth grade students. But we have a little link to a video. I'm not sure it'll work. But students saw this video as they came into the auditorium before and after the, all their events for the day. You can just hit, I think, "No thanks" down at the bottom. "No thanks," something, "Continue." So it's a video with famous people and different quotes that they said. And they all have several disabilities. And despite that, they are all very successful. So we'll only show like a couple of seconds of this video, if it works. Alright, I think we get it, Meredith. Thank you. But so that went on before as the students came in and we were trying to get them all settled. And then we gave a brief description of their day, what it was going to look like. And then they separated into different groups and then again watched it as they all came back at the end of the day. Just going to talk about our department goal.
And as Mr. Neef was saying, we, as a special education department over at the middle high school, we decided as a team that we wanted to spread more awareness, understanding, and accepting to all who are unique and different. And by doing that, we were able to separate into three different groups. If you just, Meredith, one more time. Alright, so we have the student outreach group. So the student outreach group is a mini-team. They establish consistent outreach to the whole Carver Middle High School student body to increase that awareness, acceptance, and inclusion of all students regardless of their abilities or differences. So different events that we've been putting on throughout the entire school are extended homerooms, videos highlighting the disabilities, so videos capturing the key details and ideas of the disabilities that we're focusing on for that month. We do Google questionnaires. So the Google questionnaires just consist of asking the student body what they know about the disability, what they learned from the videos that they watched, and any questions that they have moving forward they would like to know, or questions that they had when they were watching the video. Another thing we've been doing is Awareness themed days. So for example, on April 2nd was Autism Awareness. So spreading that awareness and getting the whole school to get together to wear blue in awareness. Crazy Sock Day for Down Syndrome Awareness on March 21st. And we've also just recently had started doing display cases throughout the school. That consistent reminder of the awareness for the month of April. And up there is an example of this month's autism awareness bulletin board.
So there's also parent outreach group, and they got together to decide some things to do to reach out to parents and the community for outreach and awareness and support. They're actually going to be showing the Intelligent Lives documentary later on, I believe, this month. And they're inviting the community to come and watch and discuss and do different outreach as far as the parents go as well. And then there was a teacher outreach group as well. They created some of these newsletters. Meredith, if you want to hit the executive functioning newsletter. So they created some newsletters, chose some disabilities and highlighted them. This one was executive functioning. So they shared this throughout the school through Google, sent it out school-wide, and also displayed it in different teacher areas, like the teacher lunchrooms and things like that. So this one has to do with executive functioning. Says, you know, what is executive function? What are some things in the classroom that you might see that a student might struggle with? How are some, you know, easy things that regardless if a student is on a 504 plan or an IEP, what can you do to help these students and better access the curriculum? So these were given out to the teachers across the building. Lots of different information highlighted. Melissa Larry is on this board, and she is very neat and color coordinates everything. So she's really great. She should be here tonight, but extenuating circumstances led her to her dismissal for tonight. So we can move on from that, Meredith. Thank you very much. And I think we're good with that, yeah.
So there was five of us on this committee that did a Diversity Day planning. It was Melissa Larry, Angela Townsend, myself, Anne Gallagher, and Nikki Piccarelli. The five of us got together to come up with this half-day day of where we were going to spread awareness to just the sixth grade team. If you want to click the next one, Meredith. So this day was created to spread awareness to the whole sixth grade students. We decided to target the sixth grade because we felt that if it was an annual event that we were able to do throughout the next few, like forever, the new class would have the opportunity to participate in it every time that they came into the middle high school. And they would have that, you know, eventually the seniors would have it and stuff as they came in. Our goal of the event was for students to learn about a variety of disabilities through their participation in six different stations. In these different stations, students were presented with brief descriptions of the disabilities, participated in simulated activities that represented the targeted disability that they were talking about in order to help them have a better understanding of what it is like to live with that disability and go through life's challenges. So the six different stations that we had was ADHD and executive functioning, autism, vision, the deaf heart of hearing, specific learning disabilities and physical impairments. And just for a quick example, in like the autism group in that station, they did a sensory overload simulation, and they also did a PECC system. So the kids ran through trials of what it was like to not have a voice and be able to speak. So they had to communicate with their fellow classmates using pictures and making sentences to talk with them of what they needed and what they wanted. And then they did a sensory overload, so what it's like to have that sensory input coming at you at all times, listening to a whole bunch of things, people touching you, and what it's like to completely have that sensory overload. And then, for example, just like in physical impairments, they had the experience of what it was like to, you know, tie your shoe with one hand, or having those fine motor inabilities to tie a shoe and unlock and lock a lock, or to open their locker with just one hand, or whatever.
This is an example of a Stroop test. I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but we gave this in our ADHD executive functioning subgroup. And so what is supposed to happen, you're supposed to disinhibit your need or want to say the color that the word is. So on the bottom, on the top, it shows the color, blue, written in blue color. So on the bottom, you're supposed to actually say yellow, not blue. So you have to inhibit that need to say the word that's spelled out there, but really say the color that is shown there. So, and you're supposed to try to do it really fairly quickly. And it just shows that need, that what we have to kind of turn off and on throughout our day when we're trying to plan tasks and break down hard projects in class and, you know, listen to what a teacher says. And if they're saying four different things, what am I supposed to do first? And really prioritize all that. And it just kind of shows that. So for funding, there was a group of special educators that got together and applied for a grant through the ARC. And we were awarded $500 for implementing this. So that was another reason why, if only choosing one grade, because we had a small budget for it. But I think we did fairly well using that budget within that event. We had it in March on the half-day. We used the entire half-day. The sixth grade students, teachers were great enough to let us use their rooms for the most part. We used the cafeteria and the upper library and kind of spread out. So there were about 20 students in each group, and they went along with, a special educator was in the room, kind of manning the stations and planning that whole part. And then some teachers went along with the groups as well. We've broken up to, we have this OSABOT program, so that's kind of how we managed our programming. And they all brought up, went with those different groups. Throughout the day, they received a passport. Lauren's going to pass around a few just to check it out. So on each page, it says what the disability is, it has a quote and a picture of a famous person. Before they were able to leave that section, they wrote down something they learned from the session, and they received a sticker that they put on their passport denoting that they had been to that session and kind of had been debriefed on what they learned through that session. Halfway through the day, we had a snack time, so we presented different sensory snacks, like pretzels because they're hard and crunchy, chewy snacks like candy. And they were able to choose that and kind of have that downtime as well. And just to know that we know that sometimes you need a break. And I think that overall, the students were very receptive and open to learning the different things and going through, which was shown at the end of the day when we brought them all back and all the students asked questions and participated in conversation and really talked a lot about specific things that they learned and that they thought was amazing, or things that they could connect to family or friend experiences. So that was really great. We hope to do this again next year and maybe in the future for a bigger span, maybe bring it to the, an after-school faculty meeting and provide it to the teachers as well. Next slide. So if there's any questions, thank you for having us and listening today.
Thank you ladies. Nice job.
And there's a couple of things I'd like to highlight that I think is really powerful about this. First, I love the fact that this was a teacher-led goal. So the teachers came together and said, we feel like this is a need within the community, and we're going to take this on as a goal. And then it's a multifaceted goal. So it's looking at students, it's looking at teachers and staff, it's looking at parents. So I think that's a really powerful message that the teachers sent by taking this on and have done a great job with it. Got to participate a little bit on the Diversity Day. I did the deaf and hard of hearing group. I went in there one time and went through the whole process. I visited some of the other ones. And my sense on that day was the students really were engaged. So the rooms that I went into and saw, the student engagement was high. And I think there was a lot of valuable lessons for the students that came out of this. And then just the dedication of the staff to implement this program, I think, has been tremendous. So I want to thank Lauren and Angie for being here this evening, and I'll turn it to you guys for any questions.
Is that it, Andy?
I said a quick question. On your sixth grade class that you had, did you run into any student that actually had one of these, or actually was, or maybe you didn't even know they had it? Or how did they participate in this? Did they participate in this?
So, all sixth grade students participated. We did actually have a student's family member speak up and kind of give us some positive feedback and some things that we might want to change in the future. And kind of gave us some tips about the deaf and hard of hearing because she herself is a part of the deaf community. And I thought that was really great that she reached out and kind of informed us more so that we could even better our practices. The students did participate, those who even have some behavior challenges. And we just made sure that they had their staff people with them and that they were supported very well. And there wasn't really any bumps in the road that day. So that was really great.
And it was great to see a lot of like the siblings who could make connections to some of those disabilities that we highlighted because they had siblings at home or whatever. And they were really happy that we were able to talk about it. And they felt good that like people were aware of how their brother or sister was. So it was really nice to see that and hear that and have the kids speak out about themselves. Or, and you know, we did have one student who said, oh, I have autism, you know. So it was nice for them to feel that they were accepted and like that everybody was learning about them. So it was nice.
Exactly. Well, that's great. Because you know, when you're a kid, especially a student, you're around, all you want to be is like everyone else. You know, all you want to be is accepted. That's why I think something like this is great.
I think, so we're part of the student outreach group that has been doing the extended homeroom videos. And when we did, the touchy one was the social, social-emotional one. And so we had some students that had some challenging times. And, you know, we all learned from that as a teaching body, I think, you know, as a faculty, that, you know, that is a big issue that we need to address. And I think the really great thing from even the dyslexia videos that we showed was that so many students, because they didn't have to participate in the Google form, and they actually did. They wrote things about like, I felt stupid because I have dyslexia, or I have these things. And, you know, I'm glad that you're showing this, and I'm learning, and I'm glad that, you know, I can be made feel that I'm okay, you know.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Thank you so very much. This is really great.
Thank you.
We really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem.
Because we don't get it that hands-on, like you guys are being able to offer us tonight. So thank you so much for your time coming.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having us.
Is your plan to expand to other grades, like do sixth and seventh next year? And then try to grow a grade as you're going? Is that what you were referring to earlier?
Yes, so we actually applied for the grant through the teacher's grant to try to get more funding so that we could expand to more. And then, of course, we'd have to get other teachers of grade levels to kind of work into that and maybe use a different kind of timeframe. Because we felt that because the students were so engaged that even using the entire full day was like, oh, we could have had a little bit more time just to even more, you know, process things through and make sure that everybody had enough discussion time.
That was, I guess, the only thing, because these are great, I think. But that was the reflective part of it, was kind of what I would be good, you know, where they're going to, what they really took away from that.
Right.
So that that can grow, kind of thing?
Yeah, so each section had that time at the end. But again, it was like not quite enough time for that. And then we came together as a big group and did it as a group. And so in that case, yes, they're able to listen to each other and us kind of reflect on the day. But it's such a big group, so if you really wanted to share, and you know, bells are going to ring and they have to.
About like a survey thing or something for them at the end?
Well, and that's what we had kind of talked about afterwards.
We, as a committee, a team, we met afterwards after it happened. And we kind of like went through like, what should we do next year again? Like what are some things we can change? What should we add? And one of them was feedback from the students, like a questionnaire. You know, getting their feedback afterwards if they need to know more information or more clarity on things. And, you know, feedback from the teachers that, you know, we took their time, the sixth grade time and stuff, to get feedback from them too. So that is something that we're looking into adding for next year.
But even that positive stuff for you guys, for that, to just support that effort that you're putting in is a nice thing to hear those things that the kids would have to say.
Right. And it was like, we had a lot of support from the sixth grade teachers as well as administration to let us kind of go with it. Mr. Scholes gave us our bulletin board. So now we can have a bulletin board. We were having issues. We ordered one, and it can't get up on the wall. And, you know, we were having all these roadblocks. But we had a lot of support with this, so it was really appreciated.
In terms of hitting other grades, if the extended homerooms aren't just for sixth grade?
No, that's for the whole school.
So in terms of hitting the whole, right, that's for the whole building?
No, I guess my point was that next year, they'll have seventh graders who've been through the process. So they could be really helpful.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
I think the simulated activities are important. It's more than just watching a video and listening to somebody speak. They actually get that opportunity to go through, you know, kind of the motions, so to speak, and really figure out that, oh, this might not be so easy after all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Can I ask one more?
Sure.
The $500, was that, did that cover everything that you did with this? And you project next year being, $500 being enough for that? Or is it something that would be more?
Everything that grows costs more.
Yeah, right.
In that grows costs more.
So we do have, we did keep a lot of things. We tried to preserve. We tried to use. We tried to preserve, we tried to use sheet protectors and things like that when we could so that we, you know, could repurpose the information. But, and some things we tried to gather between us and use, but I think that 500 might be if we stuck to a grade, but we'd probably need more if we expand.
If we expand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you very much.
Our next discussion is school committee participation in graduation. In past practice, the chairperson of the school committee has handed out diplomas at graduation. Last year, the students and the senior class advisors asked why that was, you know, why did the school committee chair have that honor? After speaking with James a little bit last year, I made a proposal to change that tradition. I spoke individually with some of the members of the committee in the weeks up to graduation and some of the members voiced concern that this type of change should be discussed at a committee meeting and suggested that if we were gonna make some sort of a change along the tradition of the school committee chair, now, you know, being Mr. O'Brien at this time, handing out diplomas at graduation, that we should have that discussion as a committee prior to graduation. So I reviewed the school committee policy manual. There's no stated policy about the roles of the school committee's members during a graduation ceremony. So I'm not necessarily recommending a policy or it's not a policy change, it's really just been tradition. The tradition in Carver is that the school committee chair hands out diplomas to students. So I'd like to make a suggestion that we change that tradition and I've talked to James about that a little bit and wanted to get the feedback of the committee. Ultimately, in my mind, that honor should go to the principal or the assistant principal or another member of the school committee who knows the students well. And not that the school committee chair doesn't know the students well, but I think that you're, you know, the administrators in the building are the people who get to know the kids really well. And I think that ultimately, you know, graduation is a ceremony that's run by the senior class advisors and the principal of the school and they should have some leeway and flexibility in terms of establishing how things happen during the ceremony. So my suggestion would be that either the principal or the assistant principal hand the students their diploma and that the superintendent and the school committee chair also be on stage to recognize the students and shake their hands. In our process, there's actually an official photo that's taken. We have a group called commencement photo that takes a picture of every student who receives their diploma with the person handing them the diploma and that's the frame of the picture. The frame of the picture is the student and the person handing them the diploma. And I think that's also a tradition we're gonna continue. Now, students don't have to buy that picture, but certainly they have the option to. And I just think there's, I think it's a more personal touch to have either the principal or the assistant principal being the person to do that. But since it has been the longstanding tradition in Carver that the school committee chair held out the diploma and since we discussed last year that if we were gonna make some sort of change in that, in the graduation ceremony, that we have a discussion about it, I wanted to open it up to the committee for discussion.
So I've done the last two, I believe the last three. And I ironically had a conversation with Scott about this prior to last year's graduation and part of my thought process was pretty much reiterating what he said and it was ironic because when I sat to talk to him about it, he was talking about the students had come to him at the same time. And it was really, you know, one of the ways it hit me was that I had somebody mention that, you know, their daughter graduated and they were looking at the picture up on the wall and they're like, who's that up there? And she's like, I don't know. And that just didn't feel right to me, that why it should be, why it wouldn't be somebody that's connected with the school. So that picture that they receive, receiving the diploma is a recognizable face to them and somebody that was involved more in their education than one of us. I just didn't, I think it's more personal and a far better experience and a memorable one for them to have a picture with somebody who they at least know who the name of the person is in the picture. I would not want that to become a loose situation where anybody could do it, but I don't think that's the intent.
Yeah, so in the past, there have been specific requests made by, you know, someone said, well, my uncle is a teacher in the school, so I'd like my uncle to come and present the diploma. Or this person, this person is really close to me and I'd like them to present. We've had some families make a request. I'd like my, and you know, whatever, I'd like to have this person. I'd like to have my aunt who this thing's happened, I'd like them to come up and present my diploma. And the intent is never, my, from my mind, the intent would never be to create a situation where people would get to choose who grants them their diploma. That would be taking requests. But I think that, I do think, I agree that I do think, it's something that I've always wondered about. As the principal of the school for 10 years, it was something I wondered about. And when I was the principal, I enjoyed reading the names and just the way our ceremony works, the kids came and stood next to me and we had that, there was a little bit of connection of reading their names and I enjoyed that, but I also thought sometimes, boy, maybe it should be myself or the assistant principal or someone else who's handing out the diploma. So I would support a change along this line and we brought it to the committee because it really, it is a change of tradition that we felt the committee should be, have the ability to weigh in on.
And just to finish my thought there, I don't, the fact that the kids came at the same time and were sort of looking for the same thing sort of solidified it for me. They're asking for something different and I think it should be different. So I don't think this is anything we need to necessarily vote on because it isn't a policy. And unless you felt the need to establish a policy, I don't necessarily see why, but just to allow any discussion or conversation that anyone might have.
I agree with what you and Scott have just said a lot lately. I mean, it's, I agree it should be someone closer to them through their educational career.
Recognizable at least, you know?
They don't see us very often, you know, but I would have no problem with that.
My daughter could say, that's my dad, but that's about it, right?
There is, there is a tradition that school committee members, so the one time we've allowed someone else besides the chair to hand out the diploma is the tradition in Carver has been that school committee members have been able to hand out diplomas to their own children, which does, that is a special circumstance, but we have to be with that tradition. That is a tradition that has been in place since I've been in the school district. So that's something I wouldn't be opposed to be maintaining either, unless the committee didn't feel strongly about that one way or the other.
I was good with it last year as far as making them switch. It didn't affect me.
We didn't switch last year.
No, no, but when it was brought up. We brought it up before last year and you and I talked about it. I'm absolutely fine with it.
Good to go?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it, I, you know, I'm a very traditional person typically, but in this case, I mean, clearly, even though we're here advocating on their behalf, they don't all necessarily know who we are. So I think it would be more meaningful from them if they were to receive it from their principal or their assistant principal or someone that's more, you know, visible in their, their life as a student here.
I think a school committee representative should be there and should be shaking a hand. I just don't think we should be the one in the picture. I don't think we should be the one hanging on the wall with the picture of the diploma.
As I said, my recommendation to, you know, to the interim principal, Mrs. Schultz, will be that either be the principal or the assistant principal be the person who would grant them their diploma and myself and the school committee chair be on stage and shake their hands. And, but that will be a suggestion to them and they can, you know, make that decision of how that actually plays out. All right, really good?
Yep, sounds good.
Recommendations?
All right. Now on to FY '20 budget. Talking about this again? So, so since our last meeting, I made some, you know, obviously there was a clear concern at the last meeting about funding the fall out position and the school, and the committee made a vote to fully fund that position. And at that time, I went back to the town administrator and say, is there any way that we can come to an agreement to fund this position that we could work on together to have us go in with the same, a similar budget number at town meeting so it didn't become a town meeting for discussion between, I mean, obviously that discussion can still be there, but just have the school committee and the board of selectmen working together to come up with a way to fully fund the position, the opposition that the school committee voted for. So as a result of that, the board of selectmen voted to support a new free cash item this year called Townwide Operations and Field Maintenance and Supplies. The board of selectmen have placed $40,000, $41,000 in that line item. So, and we'll be able to charge $41,000 of expenses that were in our budgets, that line item, which in turn frees up $41,000 to fully fund the opposition at the middle high school. To do this, to create this new free cash line item, the board of selectmen took $20,000 from Snow and Ice, which was a different free cash line item, and we agreed to have our special education reserve free cash line item reduced by $21,000 to $104,000. So there was $21,000 from our special ed reserve, $20,000 from Townwide, from Snow and Ice. Those two free cash items came together to come up with the $41,000, which would allow us to fully fund the opposition. You know, we have a little summary about this in a presentation, so we'll go through the presentation, but that's kind of the big picture overview of the proposal we'd be making. And if approved, that would allow us to create a vote, a budget number of $23,840,434. But Brad will kind of take us through how, just how that changes in the overall budget.
You can go to the next slide, man. So this is just a quick recap of the approval on the 11th of last month. This just shows where we were, the difference, that got added to the town proposal. And that's all after that slide. And then these are the adjustments made from the previous budget. So you have the original approval that was made. We're taking $523 off of school choice. CES grounds is $10,000 and middle high school grounds is 31 and that gives you your new number. To recap the offsets, just so you guys are aware.
And that just represents, just to be clear on that, if you remember, if you go back to that slide, you know, that represents the $41,000 in essence that we could be charging off to that now townwide free cash line item of $41,000 of operations and maintenance. So that's since that money came out of our budget, allowing us the flexibility to fully fund the opposition.
And also that money will now roll into, after this one year of free cash, we'll list that in capital so that actually frees up $41,000 from our budget for good from these expense lines.
I'd accept the motion before we create any discussion.
So say that one more time, please?
Going forward, this $41,000, this would only be a one year, the way it is right now, but after this year, we're planning on putting that into a capital, the capital line item for capital improvements, district-wide, for town, school, everything. That's where that will go. So this is a one-time adjustment to move that money from our budget into that line item. This year, it's represented by free cash, but going forward, that would transfer into capital. Correct.
And which we had talked about in terms of accessing capital funds, that's a benefit for us long-term.
So just curiosity, what's it labeled under capital as, that $41,000? And that can be just a?
Well, again, it's going, Brad's going a step ahead into next year. It's not, it's not, it's not into the, it's not in this year's budget, so, you know.
Free cash one year, it's just, it's townwide maintenance improvements probably, but, I mean, we don't have a title for it the following year, but it'll just be probably school and town and building upgrades. It may be more than $41,000. That's just at least what we're gonna get off of our budget to roll into that account going forward. So it's beneficial for the school side.
That way, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So again, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a school district budget of $23,840,434 for FY '20.
Second. So motion main and seconded. Any questions at all?
One thing I want to add on is, the actual offsets right here, you'll see, those highlight the school choice number. That number is now going to be $375,319. That is a little bit less than the previous one you guys approved and that's based on health insurance came in at 7.5%. So it's actually half a percent lower than what we gave to you guys that you originally approved at 8.
Well, we had a, we had a nine and we kept saying, we think it's gonna go to eight, go to eight, and they actually voted 7.5.
So generous of them.
So on that, if you remember, we were kind of rolling the dice because right now, we're planning on taking about $300,000 for school choice this year. None of our kids are graduating, so we know if no one leaves, we're gonna take in 300 grand the following year. We added on seats that were a risk. We don't know who's gonna come in. So we're rolling dice on 75,000 now, which is less than, I think, we had 90, 390 before. So that's where we kick that savings back into.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous?
At our last meeting last month, the committee asked me to get feedback on the calendar for next year about taking two weeks off at the holiday break. So we did a survey of the staff on that and put it out to the staff in the district and I was gonna put the results up as we wait in anticipation.
The 151.
I just put the calendar up. So.
I can put the other part up too. Hold on, it's right here.
Yeah, so I was waiting in anticipation, but I'm alive. The teachers voted approximately 70% to 30% to have two weeks for the holiday break. So I'm proposing a calendar that includes two weeks. That would make our last day of school Thursday, June 18th. Otherwise, the calendar is unchanged from what was presented last time we met. And so that would be, we would do our professional days upfront, so we'd have three teach professional days before Labor Day and then students would return the Tuesday after Labor Day, similar to what we followed this year. And I thought it was great that we had 151 responses to the survey, so people wanted...
Those were you, Brad.
I know, I actually, I actually, I did limit it to one response per person. I put that, you can put that into a Google form to make sure it wasn't. And I will say, at one point, it was 100% in favor of not doing the two weeks, but that's because I was the first one to vote. That changed quickly after that. So, yeah, so anyhow, I would accept the motion to approve the FY '20 calendar unless people want to go back and look at some of the details from the last month, but nothing's really changed from last month besides the two weeks for the holiday break.
I'd accept the motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY '20 calendar with the two weeks for the holiday break.
Second.
Motion main and seconded. Any questions? We kind of looked it over last time pretty well, besides this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous?
All right. As a member of Reed's Collaborative, the school committee has to appoint someone to be on the board of directors. Historically, the superintendent has served on the board. I'd be glad to continue my role on the Reed's Board of Directors and would entertain a motion to that extent.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Scott Neef as the Carver School Committee's representative on the Reed's Board of Directors.
Second. Motion main and seconded. Any questions?
Thank you, Scott.
As always, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous?
Okay, the last, last thing on our agenda is superintendent's evaluation. So I'll give a little bit of an overview of this before the committee goes through. Superintendent, very similar to teachers, is evaluated on four standards. Instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, professional culture. Each standard has several indicators. As part of the evaluation process, the chair will go through each of the indicators and the four standards of the evaluation. Each member will have to give a rating on each indicator and then the rating choices are unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient or exemplary. Last month, I did provide you with evidence for each of the indicators under each standard. You also have to rate me on my three goals. The ratings for the goals are, did not meet, some progress, significant progress met or exceeded. At the end of the process, the chair will take the ratings and in coordination with the co-chair, will do the summary. So they'll do the overall ratings for each standard and then they'll do the overall rating for the superintendent as a whole. And then they'll write a brief summary as an overall statement. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about the process.
You're done?
No, I'm good.
All right, so I'll turn over, I'll turn over to James.
We'll just go through each one. I'll read off the goal and then the indicators as we go through and then we'll just go through a roll call vote so you can get the counts. All right?
Thank you.
So we'll start off and we'll just go from right to left if you guys don't mind each way we go through. All right? Just to make it consistent for... So we're starting off with the performance goals, the first one being the professional With these, I...
Do you want me to read the goal?
We can read off the goal, it's just the, the goal that we have to read off, your key actions we've done with all the review you guys should have looked through. When we get to each indicator, we'll go through each indicator too, but I'll just read the goal as we get to the goal. goal as we get to the goal. So for professional practice, in order to develop skills and strategy development, data analysis and instructional leadership, I will complete the third year of the new superintendent induction program as measured by continued development and implementation of the educational blueprint by May of two thousand and nineteen. So you just got to give me your vote as far as what you choose for your rating on that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure I'm looking at the right one. I said met.
So these are, yeah, these are his actual, these are the larger goals that he had established for the first three goals. So you have a met.
Yep.
Met.
Met. I think Scott, in this one, not only have you completed this course, but you've implemented a lot of what you've gained through this course. And I, I think that's made a huge impact on where we're going as far as the professional practice part goes, so I will be exceeded there.
Met for me.
The second is the district improvement. In order to ensure that the district has an evaluation system that supports teachers and administrators in improving their overall performance, I will organize a team of administrators and teachers to review and as appropriate, revise the educator evaluation system for teachers as measured the creation of a revised educator evaluation system for the Carver Public Schools.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I, I have significant progress because he's going to present the final information to us in May. That's the only reason why.
Met.
I also put met because we haven't got the information yet.
Met for me, too.
And the third one is district improvement. This is the. In order to develop student self-awareness and self-management skills to improve academic outcomes, I will work with the academic administrative leadership team in implementing the Safe and Supportive Schools Action Plan. Develop as part of the Safe and Supportive Schools Grant through developing programs to assist students' social, emotional learning skills as measured by programmatic evaluations and teacher professional development opportunities in social, emotional learning.
Met.
I put significant progress.
I met. I think this is a constant continuation.
Met for me.
So now we move on into the performance rating for standard one, which is instructional leadership, and I'll go through each indicator. This is an unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient or exemplary. One A ensures that all instructional staff design effective and rigorous, standard-based units of instruction consisted of well-structured lessons with measurable outcomes.
Proficient?
Proficient.
Proficient? The second instruction ensures that practices in all settings reflect high expectations regarding content and quality of effort and work, engage all students and are personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs, interests and levels of readiness.
Proficient?
Proficient.
Proficient?
Proficient.
One C is assessment. Ensures that all principals and administrators facilitate practices that propel personnel to use a variety of formal and informal methods and assessments to measure student learning, growth and understanding, and make necessary adjustments to their practice when students are not learning.
Proficient?
Proficient.
Proficient? And evaluation. Ensures effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulations and contract provisions.
Proficient?
Proficient.
Proficient? The last under standard one is data-informed decision-making. Uses multiple sources of evidence related to student learning, including state, district and school assessment results and growth data to inform student and district goals and improve organizational performance, educator effectiveness and student learning.
Proficient?
Proficient.
I would say exemplary here.
I agree, exemplary.
I think whether everything is fully developed or not, Scott, you're delving into all those new things that are coming up, and you're keeping up to date with what, what's happening, and I, and I think it reflects on what you're doing.
Thank you.
So moving on to the second standard, management and operations. On two A, develops and executes executive plans, oh, excuse me, develops and executes effective plans, procedures, routines and operational systems to address a full range of safety, health, emotional and social needs.
I'm going to say exemplary.
Proficient.
Proficient?
Exemplary.
Human resources management and development implements a cohesive approach to the recruiting, hiring, induction, development and career growth that promotes high quality and effective practice.
Proficient?
Proficient.
Proficient?
Proficient.
Scheduling and management information systems uses systems to ensure optimal use of data and time for teaching, learning and collaboration, minimizing disruptions and distractions for school-level staff.
Proficient.
Proficient?
Proficient.
Law, ethics and policies, understands and complies with state and federal laws and mandates, school committee policies, collective bargaining agreements and ethical guidelines.
I'm going to say exemplary.
Proficient.
Exemplary?
Exemplary.
Fiscal systems develops a budget that supports the school's vision, mission and goals, allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district and school level goals and available resources.
Sorry, exemplary.
Exemplary.
Exemplary? Standard three is family and community engagement. Three A actively ensures that all families are welcome members of the classroom and school community and can contribute to the effectiveness of the classroom, school, district and community.
Exemplary.
Proficient.
Proficient?
Proficient.
Sharing responsibility, continuously collaborates with families and community stakeholders to support student learning and development at home, school and community.
Oh, sorry. Exemplary.
Proficient.
Exemplary?
I'll say proficient as well.
Communication engages in regular two-way culturally proficient communication with families and community stakeholders about student learning and performance.
Proficient?
Proficient.
I don't know how much this one really impacts you, Scott. Proficient? Proficient.
And family concerns, addresses family and community concerns in an equitable, effective and efficient manner.
Proficient.
Exemplary?
Proficient, excuse me.
And the final, professional culture. Commitment to high standards fosters a shared commitment to high standards of service, teaching and learning with high expectations for achievement of all.
Proficient?
Proficient.
Exemplary?
Exemplary.
Cultural proficiency ensures that policies and practices enable staff members and students to interact effectively in culturally diverse environment in which students' backgrounds, identities, strengths and challenges are respected.
Proficient?
Proficient.
Proficient?
I'm going to say exemplary.
Demonstrates strong interpersonal written and verbal communication skills.
Exemplary.
Tears. Proficient.
Proficient?
Exemplary.
Develops and nurtures a culture in which staff members are reflective about their practice and use student data, current research, best practices and theory to continuously adapt practice and achieve improved results. Models these behaviors in his or her own practice.
Proficient?
Proficient.
Proficient?
Proficient.
Shared vision successfully and continuously engages in stakeholders, all stakeholders, in the creation of a shared educational vision in which every student is prepared to succeed in post-secondary education and become a responsible citizen and global contributor.
Proficient?
Proficient.
Proficient?
Proficient as well.
And finally, managing conflict employs strategies for responding to disagreement and dissent, constructively resolving conflict and building consensus throughout a district or school community. Exemplary? Is there anything that anybody would like to add? As the comments are made for the final tally, once we tally it all up and, and make our comments, I'll, I'll, as last year, send them to you guys once they're all completed before anything's finalized and signed. Anything anybody wants to input before we?
I just think, as usual, Scott's done a great job for the, for the district and for our, for our committee and as our representative, and has gone above and beyond to try and resolve conflict and try and put the students first, and especially the social, emotional aspects we've seen put in play in our school system. I think you've done a great job. Thank you.
Yeah, I think my number one thing is, you know, I'm very thankful that you're the leader of Carver Schools. And, you know, when you have something like this, that we have to share publicly and, and do this over and over again, you look at it and you say, you know, there's always room for improvement. So no one's ever, you know, perfect in any of these categories. So it's, it's, it's just something that I look at and I'm like, does he need improvement? And you know this, we talk about it. You need improvement in every category, but at the end of the day, you're really good and we are lucky to have you.
Thank you.
I echo their sentiments. I'm thankful that you're here. I so appreciate how involved you are in the community and how, even though you don't live in Carver, you're here a lot and you're very visible in parents' lives and our students' lives and throughout the community representing the school district. And I greatly appreciate your commitment and dedication and your, you know, ability to, to represent when things get tough and things get messy. And I just, I'm appreciative, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've had the opportunity to work with quite a few superintendents, Scott, and I think we're very lucky to have somebody that cares about this town. It's clear that you aren't just here as a job, but you truly care about how Carver does and how we progress. And I think what I appreciate over my past seven years on this committee is watching some of the bridges that, you know, there, there've been things that go wrong when we're dealing with the budgets and the amount of things that you deal with on a daily basis. It can't not. But you have continued to try and build bridges and make things work in the best possible way, and that's a process that's never-ending. But we've gotten some pretty incredible things done in this town over the past couple of years, and, and you've gotten us through with the help of this guy right here and, and, and this woman over here, not to be discarded at all for a lot of, I'm sitting there filling out his ratings thinking, yeah, this should be Meredith right now, I think that we're talking about, right? But I, but I appreciate the efforts that you've put into, to, to this community and what you're doing for it on lots of levels. So thank you very much.
And thank you to everybody for your comments. They're greatly appreciated. And as always, I thank the, you know, the administrative leadership team. The administrative leadership team, the teachers, the staff. You know, Carver's a great place to work. I say that all the time. Great things happen in our building and in our town and our community every day, and I'm just glad to be a part of it.
Thank you. All we have left, I believe, is to make sure that we note that Monday, April twenty-second at six-thirty is our annual town meeting. We have a new town moderator, so we will see how the floor flows. Well, please try and attend because there are a lot of things, a lot of things on there, and, and a lot of important things related to the, to the fiscal future of this town and where we need to go. So hopefully, it's a meeting that everybody can show up at and stay at, and we will see if we're able to get through it in one night or not.
We are, we're in the process of coordinating babysitting through the Y. So the Y, the YMC will be offering babysitting at the middle high school for parents to take advantage of that opportunity to attend the meeting and, and hopefully stay.
And it is a, it is a six-thirty start. They are.
Yep.
So it's a little earlier to try and fit it in. So with that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the.
We don't have a, a executive session, so any comments from the committee? Reports from the school committee?
Let's see. I echo your sentiment. I hope everyone attends town meeting and reads the warrant before they attend. Every voice is a vote, and every voice, every vote is going to matter. So it's important that everyone attend and stay till the end, because every vote on every warrant counts. And happy Easter to everyone.
Happy Easter. Have a safe week off.
Yeah, April vacation.
For our April vacation. Enjoy. Hopefully the nice weather's coming.
I don't have much to add, other than, you know, everyone, I hope to see everyone at the town meeting. And I hope everyone has a great Easter and a great Passover, too, that starts the nineteenth.
That's right. Happy Passover.
Thank you, everyone. That's short and sweet for me.
Just to reiterate, Stephanie, just to finalize kind of what you said, because we've had, I mentioned Andrew when we started out, this is the quietest meeting I think we've had in a long time. And there's been a lot of voices there, and that is excellent because you're right, every voice matters. But to be truthful, every voice matters on town meeting floor, because no matter what you say online or no matter what you say here at a meeting, unless you're there to, to voice your vote, it, it doesn't end up mattering in the long run. So you need to, you need to, if you want that voice to be heard, making the time to be there on, on April twenty-second is an important matter. And with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I think I already did.
You did?
Yeah.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.